All right then, I'll declare the meeting open. Um, I would like the CEO to read the acknowledgement of country.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Before we begin proceedings, we would like to acknowledge the traditional custodians of the land on which we meet and their ancestors past and present, the Capricorn Clan of the Durrick Nation. I also acknowledge that this land was accessed by peoples of the Durrowell and Durrick Nations. The affirmation of council. We affirm our hope and dedication to the good government of our city and the wellbeing of all of Liverpool's residents, no matter their race or creed. Tonight, we affirm our hope for sound decision-making by council, which will improve the quality of life in our city. We express our expectations and best wishes for Australia, our nation's future, the mayor, councillors and staff of council, and all those associated with good government in Liverpool. The prayer of council. For the God of our faith, we who are gathered at Liverpool City Council pray for the good government of our city. We pray for the wellbeing of all of Liverpool's residents, no matter their race, gender or creed. Tonight, we pray for sound decision-making by council, which can improve the quality of life in our city. We pray for Australia, our nation's future, for the mayor, councillors and staff of council, and all those associated with good government in Liverpool. Amen.
Thank you. Uh, I heard that councillor Balut is stuck in traffic, so we will be in abeyance on that as an apology. If he doesn't arrive, we'll put him in as an apology retrospectively. Um, and also missing in action is the deputy mayor, which I know that he had all his equipment fixed up today. So hopefully he'll join us at some time. So if, if they don't, we'll put them in later on, if that's okay to the group, with the group. The next thing is condolences. I do have a condolence and I unfortunately now I've just got to go and find it on my system, sir. Uh, here it is. Thank you, whoever did that. Magic. Uh, tonight we pause to remember one of Liverpool's most accomplished daughters, Pamela Kay Short. She was born on the 22nd of February 1947 at Crown Street Women's Hospital, the first child, child of Phoebe and Noel Short, a former mayor of Liverpool. She grew up at Yarra Road, Hoxton Park on the family acres. She went to Hoxton Park High School, where her lifelong passion for reading was united. She graduated from Liverpool High School, popular. She loved art and English and playing basketball. Pam's intellect even then was remarkable. Her independent stretch showed that she was, showed when she was 17, when she won a radio station contest and without telling her parents, headed to the big smoke to see her beloved Beatles at Sydney Stadium at Rushcutters Bay. Despite the long commute, Pam's first job was an accountancy firm in the city and she was determined to be financially independent and have her own voice. Later in the sixties, she joined Abay Count Carrefan at Nillpera as a secretary. It gave her experience in all aspects of business skills and she would find this invaluable in her future. She even featured in an advertising for the brand. A short time later, she married John Cornish. The Austro son of the chook farmer Harold and Una. Their daughter Tanya was born in 1970 and their son Brett in 1972. Pam and John were formidable team, prospering in business and they took risks and reaped the rewards. Their companies built thousands of homes for people who made Liverpool their home and shopping and industrial centres as well. The Cornish family had a great love for thoroughbred horses breeding and racing and their Tory Bern Stud in the Hunter Valley is a landmark in the industry. Pam and John played a significant part in enticing William Inglis and Sons to move their bloodstock operations from Randwick, which was they established in 1906, to Warwick Farm. When diagnosed with breast cancer, Pam remained practical and courageous. She never complained about her situation and was compassionate, giving others before herself. To her family, her parents and former Liverpool mayor Noel Short and his wife Phoebe, our council expresses our sincere condolences. And also to her immediate family and to her husband, we do obviously offer our condolences. May she rest in peace. I formally move all the normal condolences free sent to the family. The second item on the agenda is, we have a confirmation of the minutes. Somebody like to move that way? Thank you councillor Sheldon, seconded? Seconded in several places. I'll take a punt councillor who did. Uh, I'll put it, those in favour, those, those against, those in favour to clarify carried. Councillor Hachidi has declared a non pecuniary, less than significant interest in the following items. Um, but I think we, uh, which is disqualifying NOMO one, NOMO four and he's reasoning being he holds a real estate licence. Both item NO one and NO four, uh, calling for real estate agents to be banned from running for civic office, that is his reason for it. Thank you councillor Hachidi. Did you want to add anything to that?
There, there was a final part to that, uh, as to the reason why it was non pecuniary. So that's showing.
Okay, good. All right, next item.
Um, can I raise a declaration of interest as well?
Yes, councillor Hagerty, interest.
NOMO four. Um. And that, uh, uh, no, we're towards a pecuniary, I guess. Um, I'm the staff of a member of parliament.
Right. Okay, so what? Hold on, I'll just find out what councillor Hagerty's going to do seeing he's deemed it pecuniary.
Um, I'll leave the virtual room.
Okay, you can go to the kitchen for a coffee. All right, well, you're definitely, you won't be seen by others, which is the main thing with the pecuniary interest. So that's the main thing. Okay, councillor Sheldon, you had an item?
Yeah, I move, I have a conflict of interest in relation to item corp O one, which was on the original agenda, which I believe has been publicised, but not on the amended agenda. I'm an ordinary member of the Historical Society and a very significant, no offices, and it looks like it's not going to come up in the meeting any.
Okay then, thank you councillor. Just for the minute, we have councillor, um, Carnib and councillor Balut now in, in our virtual room.
Yeah.
Now I've locked.
I also wanted to declare an interest in NOMO four.
Mm-hmm.
Um, although it's non pecuniary, I believe it's significant as I am a former candidate for state parliament. So I will also leave the virtual room.
Okie dokie.
Um, and I'm corp, corp O one as well. I'm also a member of the Historical Society.
Okay. All right, thank you.
As am I, but, um, I believe that is being deferred today. Is that correct?
I have to be honest with you councillor, I'm grunting off the running sheet and, um, right now, I'm just putting one foot in front of the other. So let's see how we go.
Yeah, I, I said before, it looks like it's not actually going to be addressed in this council meeting, but it was on the original agenda and that's why I was making it clear.
Okay, thank you councillor. All right, the next item.
Yes, I also have a non pecuniary, less than significant. Sorry, I'm just trying to navigate. Um, no, my camera's off. I'm just trying to navigate which NOM it is. If you could just bear with me, I just need it to, to get the number of it.
That's fine.
Uh, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
It's NOMO one.
Mm-hmm.
So my husband has a real estate, a, um, licence which he has worked with in the past. He has not been, more recently has not worked as a real estate agent, but he does hold a licence.
Okay then, thank you for that. And is this a non pecuniary?
Yes, because he's not currently working as a real estate agent. Thank you.
No worries. Thank you for that. Uh, public submissions, yes?
I'd like to declare an interest, uh, Madam Mayor. I've have, um, I do hold a, a real estate licence, never opened up trust account nor ever practised.
Okay, thank you councillor Balut. And is that a non pecuniary?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. All right, any more? No, thank you guys. The next item is the public submissions. We have a couple of written ones which have been submitted to the councils for information and will be, um, followed up in due course. The next item is merrill minute. Hopefully it'll go up on the thing so I can read it. Thank you. Um, Liverpool council is closely following the information provided by the New South Wales and Australian governments about the noble coronavirus, COVID-19. And as the situation evolves and continues to share updates with council staff in the wider community, following directives of the Australian and New South Wales Government, council's critical incident response team has acted quick, quickly to make changes to council services and to facilitate and to ensure the health and wellbeing of council staff and community members. Many council departments have been split into smaller teams, each working at a different office or home location to minimise close contact with one another and ensure councillors equipped to continue to serve our community. Staff have been provided with the tools and resources to continue working effectively from their allocated location. At this stage, council's customer service centre, Casula Powerhouse Art Centre, all our libraries, Liverpool Regional Museum, council-owned leisure and recreational centres, the animal shelter and the community recycling centre have been closed to the public until further notice. Council's public events have been postponed indefinitely as all casual hire of community facilities have been suspended and bulk rubbish household collections for the time being have been also suspended. Council continues to receive and respond to customer requests lodged online or over the phone. Council will continue curbside waste collection and its early learning and childcare centres remain open. This information and future changes pending requirements set out by the Australian and New South Wales Government will be continued to be communicated to the community. Council staff continue to investigate ways council can support and keep connected with the wider community during these very unprecedented times. Um, I'd like to, um, formally move that and I'd also like to, uh, thank the staff for their speedy and effective response to this, I think, very unusual situation, the challenges of this virus. So I move that minute.
Mayor, before you formally put it to council, are we able to hear from the CEO and get an update on what's happening? And should anything arise from that, it then just be moved to your acceptance as part of your merrill minute?
Depending on the length of it councillor and, uh, the detail, but, um, I have no problem with that councillor. I just wanted people to have on the record what we're doing. So if the CEO is happy to give us a sort of up-to-date report, that would be fine. We can amend, addend that to my minutes.
Yep.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yep, Madam Mayor, I'm happy to do that and councillors. Um, the mayor's captured extremely effectively, uh, where we are in relation to the services. Um, so I'll go straight into where we are in relation to councillors. Um, as you can all see, we've moved into online resourcing of councillors and that will be council meetings, um, following the Gazette all today and of course briefings and strategic panels to ensure that we're able to meet our social distancing. Um, in relation to staff, the mayor mentioned, um, split groups. The reason we do this is because there are some critical areas, for instance, uh, the call centre where we don't want everybody to go down, so it's easier to have them in three separate places. So if we do need to isolate, we can still keep two other services running. And many staff are now currently working from home and using electronic resources and tools. Um, we're also making sure that we're supplying PPE to the staff that are required to use it. Um, to be honest, it is a struggle to get PPE at the moment and we're hoping as more information is provided about essential services, we'll be able to access more PPE. Um, we're currently prepping for if there is a potential lockdown for potentially two weeks or more and we're seeking guidance from local government, New South Wales, as to what they determine to be essential services. So the staff that would be exempted from being in a lockdown environment. Uh, in relation to staff and leave and how they access it, there is a meeting tomorrow between local government, New South Wales and the three unions and I'll seek further guidance, um, once they've released that. Um, the budget is obviously something that is of significant, um, interest to councillors and, and that you indeed need to be very cognisant of. Um, I'm currently undertaking a thorough review of the 1920 budget uh, to look at a number of areas where we may be able to make immediate savings. This can include making sure that, uh, we're not paying out contracts that we're not required to pay out at this point in time. It's also looking at areas where we might not have already committed funding, where we can put a go slow on or, or simply delay the project altogether. Um, an example of that may well be, uh, things in the, uh, in, 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 in the areas that are currently closed. So we wouldn't be running, um, childcare services. We wouldn't be running children's programmes out of the library, for instance, so there can be savings there. Um, I suspect there probably are many savings across the organisation that we can find in that space at this point in time. Um, I intend to do that over the next couple of days and then come back to councillors about that. Uh, it's, it is a fine balance because we want to make sure that we pay all our supplies as quickly as we possibly can and we don't cause further economic distress, um, by, by, uh, not paying out contracts when there's an opportunity to be delivering things in the community. So there's some difficult conversations that the staff and I will have to have with you councillors. Um, in relation to, uh, supporting the community and business, we obviously have a significant role to play in providing communication methods and I've had some conversations today about making sure that we ensure those are clear in languages other than English, uh, because there can be gaps in communication there. We've been costing out a range of fairly immediate measures that we can provide to the business community, the small business community in particular. Um, I'll bring these to councillors once we have full figures, but this could include things like rent relief on council-owned assets. That's not just the business, that could be not-for-profit licensed tenants as well. The one that seems an absolute no-brainer, of course, is, uh, waiving the outdoor cafe permit. Nobody is able to actually use their seating for cafes at the moment, so it would seem churlish of council to, to charge that. Uh, we can look at health inspection and compliance fees and whether we waiver those over this period of time so that businesses are able to continue, particularly in the food space, to provide takeaway without the extra impost of, of a fee. Um, we can look at things like providing, uh, free car parking in the car parks. Potentially this could be for anyone in the community or it could just be for healthcare-designed workers. That would be a matter for council to determine, but, um, that, that's something that we could do almost immediately. Uh, we can also potentially look at, uh, what we do around street parking as well, just to make it easier for those takeaway businesses to come in and out. Um, we've already started reducing compliance, um, activity so that it's, it's more around things that are dangerous or risky and not your standard compliance and I think we can probably look a bit further at that. In relation to the community, we're working very closely with the social welfare providers to have a good information about what they feel are going to be the needs over the next couple of months. Um, self-evidently, the homeless community is one that we need to make sure we're paying attention to very quickly, uh, that they're, they're obviously people that are highly at risk. Uh, we're also conscious that there are likely to be, um, the, the food shortages where people aren't able to immediately pay for groceries or seeking further access to the food service providers. Um, we've already donated all the food out of our own kitchen to the Salvation Army and, um, we're providing food from CPAC's garden to the food providers as well. There's a lot more work to be done in that space though and we'll come back to that. Uh, the library and Casula Powerhouse are providing resources, including online educational resources for families who have their kids at home. That's me and I'm sure many of the rest of you. I know the mayor as well. And we're heavily promoting that as well. The other piece of work that I think is critical to do, because the sooner we can get the economy back up and moving again, of course, the better for everyone, is to do a real deep dive into what stimulus packages are likely to come out over the next couple of months and make sure council is fully prepped to be able to apply for those stimulus packages so that we're able to bring on small local businesses as well to help us deliver those. Um, so quite a lot of work going on in this space at the moment. I would propose we do a full briefing to the councillors next week. Um, and then any measures you wish to bring in which would require a resolution of council and they would be in ones in relation to fees and charges. Um, you may wish to bring an extraordinary council meeting.
Through you, Mayor, if I may, to the CEO. Is there anything at this stage that you see that does require a resolution of council that can't wait till two weeks' time?
Uh, look, um, I think the outdoor cafe permit would be one that we could, if you, if you were willing to do it, I can tell you, we do that for three months. The revenue forgone amount is around about $6,000. It's, it's immaterial, really. And it would be, I think, a meaningful thing to quickly do for those businesses that have already been shut down for five or six days. Um, otherwise, I think the amounts you're looking at as such that you would want to have a briefing before you made any decision. Oh, I'm sorry, I should say, with the exception of freeing up spaces in the Warren Service Way for healthcare workers, again, the amount of forgone revenue we're looking at there is around $5,000. I think, again, it's fairly immaterial and you could comfortably resolve to do those two things without a more formal briefing.
Uh, through you, uh, Madam Mayor, are we looking to, uh, do something about it in the next couple of weeks, uh, CEO?
Um, my intention was to bring a briefing to councillors next week. Um, there was some discussion then about whether councillors would wish to have an extraordinary council meeting rapidly following that to, in order to enact some of those measures. That's not for me to determine. The councillors need to determine that, but it seems a pretty strategic way to move forward.
Well, councillors, um, given that the low amounts of revenue that would be lost in these two particular goodwill exercises, you could actually just put it on the end of the merrill minute and it'd be done and dusted.
Yeah, as long as we change healthcare workers to essential workers or just don't lock ourselves into healthcare workers. Um, there are people, you know, that work at, um, Centrelink across the road from Northumberland Street Car Park who would, who are very busy and need to get in there and start helping out, so.
Is there any disagreement with that councillors?
No.
All right, well.
No, not at all.
Okay, so we waive the following fees on outdoor ca- cafe permits and parking in the, for essential workers and thanking the council staff. I'll move, move that formally.
And, and, uh, just, Madam Mayor, if I may add, and waiver any previous outstanding amounts for the outdoor permits, please?
I don't know whether, to waiver any fees that somebody had got themselves into trouble for, by to this virus. So I, I really think that's a separate issue councillor. I don't think that should be put in there at this point. I mean, if there is a legitimate reason, that will be considered quite genuinely. Um, but I, I think that that's really not in the, in the, a goodwill gesture. That's actually saying to someone, well, we've got a virus and we're trying to do the right thing by everybody at this moment. Um, there are things that we're not even aware of that happened in the past, but we're willing to ignore it. I'm not happy with that, to be honest.
Madam Mayor, the virus has been around for three months and hence I'm saying that.
Yeah, I get that. I understand that. But if that's a reason, that will be taken into consideration quite generally, regards to business loss. Because a lot of people, as you know, are probably not, are going to go out of business sadly, sadly to say. Um, but look, I'll be guided by the council if they want to put that in. It's, it's, I'm not going to. Through the mayor. I think that that is covered in a, um. One at a time, please councillor, um, councillor Rhodes.
Okay, through, through, through the mayor. I think that, uh, those losses, they're losses that the, uh, the businesses have had. And I think that that's been announced in the federal, uh, government package so that they can, um, be covered for those sorts of things. That's my understanding of it.
There is some way to get some assistance. Uh, anyone else that wishes to just make a comment?
Ma- Madam Mayor, um, I was hoping that we could add something for visitors to the hospital. I mean, although pe- people with the virus that will be in hospital can't really be in contact with anyone. The reality is family is going to turn up to talk to doctors and nurses there and get information. So I was hoping around the hospital, we could, um, take limits of parking or maybe just increase the limit or.
Perhaps the state government cannot charge people to park at the hospital.
Sorry, say that again?
Perhaps the state government can stop charging people to park at Liverpool Hospital.
I think that'd be a great idea. I mean, if we could do that, but also just around the hospital, the local streets just around the hospital. Because I do know that many people park there also.
Can I say quite openly, the hospital staff tell their patrons to go and actually park in the street. It's cheaper. Um, now, what?
So, Madam Mayor, just a minute, in regard of whether any previously outstanding amount, can we say that council will consider any previously outstanding amount?
I think that's a fairly reasonable suggestion councillor did.
Okay.
Yeah, all right.
Because it'll be on a case-by-case basis.
Yeah, of course.
I can get that information for councillors, um, for the briefing, so you're conscious of, of what those issues might be.
Yeah, and that's fair enough. Now councillor Aards asking for the limits on parking removed visits to the hospital. I think there should be a time limit on that, otherwise you're going to have a situation where.
Yeah, I agree. I agree with that. So, um, what, what do you say fit?
To be reviewed in three months or something like that. Yeah, I would suggest three months and then it'd be reviewed at that point.
Can I, and without saying any bad guy here and coming out, um, not wanting to support people, obviously we need to. If you just remove parking, and this is coming from someone who is trying to switch the whole things off. If you just go in there now and around the hospital, say, no parking limits, times metres, it will get abused by everybody else. We're not going to be able to control it with who a patient is, who a patient is it? If we are going to do that, we need to put a measure in place to ensure that those people that need it do get it. Our quickest win could be contacting state government. I have to agree with councillor Hagerty so that they can sort out their parking issues in the hospital. We do want to help. We do want to support. I'm one for, for that. We just need to ensure that we do it in the right way so that the people we're trying to support actually get supported. We don't just open it up as a free-for-all, uh, because it will get, no doubt, it's human nature. It, it will get abused. And I can tell you firsthand that if you are one of the unfortunate ones that has someone in hospital suffering from this, the doctors are sending you home anyway and saying, don't hang around the hospital. The no visits are allowed and yes, there are people that will still hang out. If we are going to put measures in a place that does that, please be careful how we do it to ensure that the people that need it actually get it.
Can we put the word trial in front of limits on parking?
I, I think just leave it out.
Just get rid of three.
I think get three. Yeah, and then contact the state government because I think that, as we all know, we've always had this problem, the payment of parking at the Liverpool hospital or any hospital is quite enormous. Um, and it's a private affair unfortunately, and they have strict contracts with the particular provider. Um, okay, so.
Just through you, Madam Mayor, really quickly, I have to agree with councillor Hachidi because the other thing is, um, with the current restrictions in place in terms of, you know, people being discouraged from even being in public spaces, we don't want to be seen to encourage people to, you know, go into, um, say, the hospital or wherever because there is parking there.
That's true. Okay, I, I, I understand people's sentiment. Okay, is there anything else people want to add to this as well?
Uh, just Madam Mayor, on point, if we can add outdoor cafe permits.
Okay, yep, outdoor.
Outdoor cafe.
Down to four, outdoor cafe permits.
Yeah.
Yep, got it. Yep, thank you. All right, any other discussion? I'm going to put it, those in, those against? Nobody? I'll put those in favour, yes. I'm doing this. I'm going against first because I thought, well, that'll be easier to sort with no, no bother.
No, you're right, you're right. Nobody against.
That one's gone through. Thank you very much councillors for that. Now the next item is on page twenty.
To the next item, there is an urgency motion that's been sent through to George, please.
Oops.
I, I'm not sure if this has been circulated, but councillor, as it goes, can, can I speak for a sec on the motion before it's moved, so everyone gets an understanding?
Yep.
Councillors. Thank you, Mayor. Um, councillors, we've pretty much said, yes, we want to support raid in the fight against or to ensure that the, um, intermodal, you know, we toughen up the conditions. At the last council or the last two council meetings, we've pretty much discussed it. And I think we, as councillors, and I'll take the blame here for not actually wording it correctly in relation to, uh, the funding and when it's dispersed. Yes, they had to come back to us with, um, a case outline and the prospect of success. At the last meeting, it was circulated that in order to get the prospect of success, they needed some funds to get the expert witnesses and the reports done. All I'm asking for here is to clarify, uh, a point that we do allow the initial 30 to 50K, uh, be released subject to invoices and, um, being provided. But that allows them to get the expert witness reports done. Um, once they are done, then we can get the full case outline with the prospects of success. Then we can determine whether or not we should release any other funding. So that's pretty much, there's a lot of words in the motion, uh, but it's pretty much saying approve the 50-odd thousand dollars initially to allow them to get those reports done. Receive the cas- case outline with the prospects after that and then decide whether or not we're going to fund any more money.
Okay, and the reason it's urgent is? The reason why it's urgent.
The reason why it's urgent, Madam Mayor, is because to meet the court date deadline that has been given, it's April the fourth.
Okay, well, can't see that on the document where I'm sitting, so April.
Yeah, it's in the documents that have been sent to you.
Okay. All right. Okay, I'm going to treat it as urgent because of the court date. I'm opening up the motion now for discussion. Would someone like to speak to the motion?
I'll I'll speak to the motion just to make a quick point.
The motion moved by councillor Hachidi is seconded by?
Corriss Rhodes.
Okay. We're going to start, yeah?
Yep, so can I, I'll just speak to it just to make a point very clear that I guess it was councillor's fault that it was worded ambiguously. But council staff did in fact implement it to the letter and that any accusation that they hadn't is not correct.
Councillor, if I could, I'll I'll respond to that, yes.
Through the chair.
Oh, sorry, through you, Mayor, sorry. And in a couple of, and I shouldn't be, and I won't disclose the members, otherwise I can, in a couple of email exchanges that I was CC'd into, yes, I backed the staff on the way they handled it. It was us as councillors, and I'll take the blame for this, that moved the motion, that didn't word it correctly.
Actually, I think it was councillor Rhodes that moved the motion, so I'll speak to it after you.
Councillor Rhodes, you don't interrupt someone that's speaking and.
Sorry, through you, Madam Mayor, I was just correcting, I think you'll find that I moved the motion.
Shush, 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 thank you councillor Hachidi, keep going.
Me or councillor Rhodes, whoever moves the motion, I've got no issue with that. As a councillor, yes, I'll take responsibility for the wording of the motion. The intent was there, it wasn't worded correctly. In the couple of email exchanges between staff and members of the public, I did jump on the back of staff and say, yes, they're actually doing as per the words. Okay, the intent was different, but staff can only act on the words and that's a lesson I've learned. And I'll ensure that motions are a bit clearer in the future.
Thank you. It wasn't a go at you or councillor Rhodes, it was in fact an attempt to defend staff.
No, councillor councillor, councillor Hagerty has the call.
Yeah, so, yeah, as I was saying, that was by no means, I wasn't having a dig at councillor Rhodes or councillor Hachidi, that was meant to be a way. I was clarifying the fact that staff did in fact act by the the letter of the motion. And as councillor Hachidi alluded to, there are some accusations being made by members of the public and I wanted to clear that up and for the sake of council, make sure that everyone understood that council staff have done what they were asked to do. So, thank you.
I'd like to speak for the motion, please, Madam Mayor.
Yes, hold on a moment councillor, if we've got anybody who wants to speak against the motion. Silence, okay councillor, you're too.
Yes, Madam Mayor, it was me that actually did move that motion and I do make apologies for it as I can understand that it lacked the necessary wording, although the matter was discussed at at that council meeting. And as councillor Hachidi has already alluded to, that the the intention of the motion was to pass the fifty thousand dollars or up to fifty thousand dollars, sorry, so that the necessary information could be supplied back to council where we can have a proper look at it and see exactly what merit we have in pursuing the case. Now, it was discussed, but I do admit that the motion lacked to make, lacked making reference to that which was discussed. And there's been considerable effort put into the above motion so that it is clear and precise into the intention of what councillors have already tried to approve at the previous meetings. So I'm speaking in favour of the above motion.
Yeah, I I gathered that. There is, there hasn't been any speakers against, so there's no formal right of reply. I'm going to put the motion, those against the motion. Those for the motion, I'm going to say it's unanimous. Thank you. Next item is on page seventy three.
Move that way, Mayor.
Thank you.
Seconded, Madam Mayor, councillor Hagerty.
Thank you indeed councillor Hachidi.
Can I just have some clarity on it, please?
The executive will consider any motions that council puts forward because the actual conference has been cancelled.
Sorry, Mayor, this is the change of day.
Yeah, I'm against the motion.
You're against the motion, councillor, do you wish to speak to it then?
No, it's not unanimous. I'm against the motion.
Which the first one, the urgency one? The urgency motion, are you talking about councillor Sheldon? Lost him.
Probably is here, you see, Mayor.
Can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
Yes, I've heard it against the motion, I can hardly hear you guys.
Thank you, can we just make sure some.
Record me as voting against as well.
Okay.
You mean the previous.
Can someone text councillor Sheldon and say, we've heard him and we've got him noted as voting against the previous motion?
We can hear you councillor Sheldon, your name recorded against the motion.
Yep, there you go. He can read it.
Thank you.
Okay, so the next.
Through the chair, Madam Mayor, when you're ready.
Yes, councillor. We're ready, we're on the second thing.
Yes, now this is on the COO two. Can I just state that the the councillors rewording of the motions, I approve. And that when we do get to have a national general assembly, that those motions be put forward as to the wording that the councillors suggested, the councils, council staff suggested.
Okay, councillor, these will go to the executive of this particular group and they will consider them and in lieu of no conference. And if they come back to us and they've taken no notice, there's nothing preventing you from putting them up again. Okay, so we moved and seconded, I'm going to put it those against.
Do you move on a question?
Yep.
Yeah, a question in relation to COO two, the proposed motion on page seventy five, limiting housing development to no more than forty percent. In the past, we've been fairly sympathetic toward granny flat development or the secondary dwellings. The effect of that motion would seem to be inimical to granular flat developments. And I'm just wondering whether there are many ones wide that up what the consequences are of doing that in terms of secondary developments, which in the past, in previous motions, we've been fairly supportive of. It's not a point for against, it's just a question.
Through the chair, Madam Mayor, did you just rule before that that we're going to readdress this if and when the assembly is going to be held?
Yeah, these these, if these motions go through this evening, they will be directed to the executive committee who will consider the motions in lieu of the fact there is no conference. If the if the motions do not go through and we get something back saying they don't support them, there is nothing stopping us from resubmitting them at a future conference.
Yep.
Okay, happy with that.
So can we add to the one that councillor Sheldon's talking about? Limits housing developments to cover no more than forty percent of block size in urban developments excluding secondary dwellings?
Um, no, well, I wouldn't support that, so you'd have to put that up as another motion.
And why wouldn't you support that?
Well, because the biggest problem that we've got councillor is in our developed areas where we're increasing the densities, right, but without without providing the necessary space that we need for people, for a for a lifestyle that they're comfortable with. That's the issue.
It's most probably because of the small lots of of land.
I'm I'm happy as the mover to take it on as part of the initial recommendation, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you councillor. Any discussion against these motions? Okay, there's no opposition, so those against the motion, please speak up now.
Is this, which motion are we talking about, Madam Mayor?
Motions that are going to the conference executive.
And is that including the adopted of the motion below limits the housing?
Yes, councillor Hachidi has adopted councillor Hagerty's motion into his motion. So if you wish to oppose.
I thought it was my motion. These motions were put up by me, Madam Mayor.
By councillor, excuse me councillor Rhodes, please listen. Councillor Tiddy's moved and councillor did has seconded.
But I put them onto the council papers.
It doesn't matter who put them onto the council papers, the most.
I thought the person who put matters onto the council paper had to move the motion.
Um, I think we revised that and we might be correct in saying, but this is an actual motion that's come on the books as COO two and it's globally called motions to twenty twenty National General Assembly. It doesn't mention in the body of the work, anybody's personal support for it, as far as I can see it, even though I know some of them would be yours councillor because of the nature of them. So I would rule that this is not a personal motion, this is a council motion, a collective of council motions. And so it would stand in the name of the Chitty and councillor did. And councillor Chitty has accepted the slight change to that, which you're opposed to, which you can duly note. Or you can put.
I have accepted a second as well, Madam Mayor.
Yes, you have seconded councillor did.
Seven as well.
Pardon?
I said, I do accept the amendment by councillor Hagerty as well.
Thank you councillor. So councillor Rhodes, you can move a foreshadowed motion or you can just vote against it. It is your choice.
Well, I move the motion as as.
Okay. Okay, have we got a second up? It lapses, there's no second up, so.
It's not happy to second it.
No, he's just seconding it, Madam Mayor.
Yes, I can hear him, thank you councillor Rhodes. Okay, I'm going to put the original motion as moved by councillor Tiddy and councillor did. Those who oppose this motion, please say your names. Councillor Rhodes and councillor Hall and councillor Rhodes, the two have opposed. I'm, the rest I would now say are agreeing to the motion, so the motion stands. Thank you. The next item on the agenda for agreement, and I've just lost my lost my little list, I apologize.
You grow one.
Yep, it's on page one ninety six.
Madam Mayor, I have an amendment.
Amendment.
Sorry, Madam Mayor, I'm leaving the room for this particular item.
Enjoy your.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, one ninety six, yes, oh eighty six, glasses, eighty six. Okay, apologize for that, councillor.
Yeah, Egra eleven, Madam Mayor.
Yeah, I'm getting there.
Yeah.
So I have an amendment when you're ready, Madam Mayor.
Well, what is your motion councillor? Because your motion would.
Remove the motion as put with an alteration to point one.
Yeah.
And point one is amend the draft Liverpool local strategic planning statement, action ten point two and structure plan, insert map to read, prepare structure plan and planning proposal to rezone the Warwick Farm Racing Precinct to cut out, take out a mix of use, including and leave the word B four.
Okay, thank you. So the motion, I think everybody.
Point of order.
Yes, what is your point of order councillor?
Isn't that what we're changing it from?
We're taking out the mix of uses.
No, we're putting, we're putting in mix of uses. This is an amendment to change the document. Be quiet, please, while I explain.
Well, this is the alteration, I want.
Can I explain, please?
Councillor Rhodes, councillor Hagerty is correct, the point of order has been called. He's explaining what his point of order is and you are to be quiet until I rule on that matter. Councillor Hagerty, what is it?
So the document currently reads, prepare structure plan and planning proposal to rezone the Warwick Farm Racing Precinct to B four. That is what the document currently reads. This motion is to amend it to say, prepare structure plan and planning proposal to rezone the Warwick Farm Racing Precinct to a mix of uses, including B four. If councillor Rhodes puts up her proposed motion, it's changing it to what it is, which is not, it's not legal. You can't change.
I thank you very much councillor.
Councillor, councillor Rhodes, shush, thank you. Councillor, I uphold your point of order, which makes sense, thank you for explaining. So councillor Rhodes, the point of order is that we are trying to amend that particular statement so that it actually has that a bit clearer than what it is now. So, do you understand what that means?
So, Madam Mayor, then I move that if the motion would be that council does not amend ten point two of the structure plan to insert that particular wording and that the amendment is as was originally written.
Okay, so you're moving that, well, you're moving what you originally moved. And you have a second up?
Yes, of course.
Thank you councillor Hall. So it's moved by councillor Rhodes and.
I will foreshadow as per the book.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Hagerty.
Yes, I've worked that out.
I'll second that foreshadowed motion.
Thank you councillor Caliander. Yes, speak to your motion councillor Rhodes.
Now, Madam Mayor, can I have clarity, when councillor Hagerty says he's moving it as per the book, does that include? Is he voting for the recommendation that council amends the draft?
Then councillor, he is actually supporting the recommendation, which is before you with point one, point two and point three, with the wording as is.
So, well, Madam Mayor, the reason why, the reason why I would like to not include that amendment to the draft Liverpool strategic planning statement is because what the people from the Warwick Farm Racing Precinct have said continuously to us as councillors is that they would like the Warwick Farm Racing Precinct to be B four. And that is the way, that is the reason why I feel that that's the way it should remain. And I'm not in favour of the amendment then suggested by council. The reason why I think that it should be B four is because of the position next to the railway station where it is a best place to in to increase our density so people can make use of the railway line and have got greater opportunity to travel to work by train rather than by car. I also believe that the there is work, work opportunities for them within that particular precinct when we look at the racecourse itself, of which there will be people who will choose to live in that B four zoning so that they are close to where they can work at the railway station. I also believe that there will be further job opportunities for that particular area as we move forward in the English development. And it just makes perfect sense, it was what the state government originally said, that we should increase densities in areas that are in close proximity to the railway stations. And for that reason, I believe that that precinct should be zoned B four.
Through the CEO.
Excuse me, one at a time, would someone like to speak against the motion?
Yes. Councillor Hagerty would. The reason is twofold, one, it's come back from the Greater Sydney Commission going, make this amendment, which I think is a subtle way of them saying, we won't approve your local strategic planning statement if you don't make this change. And two, we're doing a, we're doing a structure plan at the moment, which will give us appropriate where where an appropriate sort of guide as to what should be zoned what. Blanket zoning the place before doesn't actually make any sense. I accept that near the station and that it might be appropriate to zone it before, but I'm not going to zone Rosedale Oval B four. Rosedale Oval's in the middle of that precinct and I'm not going to zone that before. I'm also not going to zone any of the other areas that that might be zoned as public infrastructure or anything like that. So, yeah, if you want to go ahead and rezone Rosedale Level as B four and put, you know, residential towers on top of it with some shops down the bottom, go ahead, but I'm not going to do that.
Thank you very much councillor, anybody speaking for the motion? Thank you very much, councillor. Anybody speaking for the motion?
I can respond to that, Madam Mayor.
No, councillor, you don't respond. I need to have someone speak for the motion.
Madam Mayor, I just need some clarity. Um, so what's on the screen before us right now is councillor Rhodes' motion?
Yes.
And councillor Haggerty wanted to move what was on the agenda?
What's in the book, yes.
Okay, okay, thank you for that.
No worries. Okay, no other speakers for or anybody against the motion? Up for motion, councillor Hall?
Yes. Now, I, my point of view of this is we've, we've attended many of those meetings with the residents in that area. When we looked at these plans originally, there were the mixed uses in, and, and since then, we have looked at that and we were going to put the whole of that area B4. And the only exception were properties near the Rosedale Oval and the Rosedale Oval itself, we can't zone that anything, it's not ours to zone, it belongs to the state government. The point is, the residents at several of these meetings that the council conducted, they made it quite plain that what they want is residential with businesses underneath. Now, if we're not going to do that, you are going to be going against the majority of the residents in that area. So therefore, I agree with councillor Rhodes that that's what we wanted. By going this way, you are going to go in opposition to the majority of the residents and I will not be voting for the changes.
Thank you, councillor Hall. Is there any other speakers against the motion?
Mayor, a question through you, if I may, to the CEO.
Yep.
Can we get an understanding from the person that wrote the report as to why these changes are necessary?
Thank you, yes. Mr Smith, would you be able to provide that information?
Certainly, through, through the CEO councillors. Uh, as you recall, the council actually resolved, uh, in December to support the LSPS with the change, um, that's identified on page 187 of the book. Uh, since that time, uh, it went off for assurance review to GSC, who have requested that change to be made, uh, to require, um, their support for council to actually make the LSPS. Uh, on page 190 of the report, it outlines that reason. It doesn't change, if you do make the changes recommended in the book, uh, it doesn't change, uh, the council's resolved position. It simply gives council flexibility, as councillor Haggerty explained, that you may have some R4, some B4, some SP2, some RE1 in that area. And if that change is made, it's consistent, uh, with council's resolved position and noting council's resolved position in relation to the structure plan that is currently under preparation and is expected to be reported back to council in May.
So further to that, the way I see it now is while I'm very supportive of the, uh, B4, um, two issues I've got. One, it's a bit rich coming from the GSC saying, um, unless you change something, we're not going to do it, given the state government has pretty much made it clear that the hospital on the other side of the railway line in Warwick Farm, um, should, can I be saying this or not? The, the, we had a brief-
I'm having trouble on you. Councillor, I would take care with your wording.
Yeah, and, and I need to be careful, sorry. Sorry about that, councillor Chitty. Sorry. Um, all right, I'll take most of that, well, all that I can back, unfortunately. Um, but I do see the point as well. If we need to, if we're saying to council officers, make it all B4, how do we then go if we need some parks that a lot of councillors ask for? If we need infrastructure, if we need that zoning, how does that affect what you can and can't do? Um, if it's just B4?
Yep. Thank, thank you, councillor. Um, you have the right of reply, councillor.
Oh, Madam Mayor, just a point of clarification. Um, was, uh, was councillor, councillor Hattie asking a question or was he speaking against the motion?
He had a foot in both camps, but, um-
No, I was actually asking a question. Thanks, councillor Caliander.
Well, you're asked whether it has the flexibility or not, councillor. I think that's the general gist.
And look, I, I wanted to sort of speak against the motion for particular that reason. I don't want to overextend, um, this discussion, but I believe no one has an issue with what the community wants. I think by and large, most of us are very supportive of what the community has very clearly told us. However, um, in kind of following the discussion so far, it seems like, um, including the word including into, um, into this motion allows a little bit of flexibility and common sense to come into this, um, rather than just kind of, uh, you know, blanket zoning this area and then finding that we need to go back and, and fix what we've done. So for, for that reason, I believe, um, we should, we should include that one word um, into, uh, into the, into the motion.
Thank you, councillor. So we've had a couple of speakers for and a couple of speakers against, so I'm going to close debate and give councillor Peris Rhodes the right of reply.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I appreciate all the comments, but we have seen, uh, basically the idea that has been submitted with the B4 and mixed business and that was rejected by the people of the Warwick Farm Racing Precinct. So I am here as a voice just simply for those people. I am proposing what they want. And for that reason, I will not be voting in agreement with the, uh, amendment recommended. I will continue to just say what the people of Warwick Farm want.
Madam Mayor? Yes, councillor Ayad? Um, can we get an answer to councillor Hattie's question? Because I actually had the same question. Well, I think it was given to you by Mr Smith. He was talking about the flexibility if you include all those items in point one, but I'll ask Mr Smith, if he could re-answer the question.
Yes, through, through the CEO, thank you, Madam Mayor. What the proposed amendment to the LSPS does is, uh, gives the council flexibility, uh, when we report the planning proposal and the structure plan to council in May. Councillors need to remember that the local strategic planning is a high-level, uh, strategic planning document that sets council's land use vision for the city. What the, what the recommendation at the moment simply says is the B4 zone is an actual zone. A mix of uses within that zone, uh, can be done through a B4 zone, an R4 zone. We've got to also look at whether there's any SP2 zone, which is an infrastructure zone available. The decision on actual zonings will be still a matter for council to make, uh, when we report back in May. But the concern was by stipulating a zone in a high-level strategic planning document, when at the end of the day, the minister or the minister's delegate is the one that ultimately makes an LEP change was problematic. So on page, uh, 190 of the agenda, it explains in there quite clearly that this doesn't actually change council's resolved position. Remember, in December, there were two resolutions, the LSPS and Warwick Farm. So council's still acting on that resolution. Um, but by doing this, it will allow the local strategic planning statement to get a letter of assurance from the Greater Sydney Commission and for council then to adopt it by the legislative timeframe, which is the 31st of March. I, I hope that's clear. Thank you.
Okay.
Just one question, sorry.
If I may, you might just get councillor more clarification. You say councillor, uh, shush, councillor Haggerty, what is your question?
Um, so given they've already knocked it back and said, please make this change, if we go ahead without making the change, what are the consequences? Do they then knock it back again? And then does that then delay the process to give the community what they've been asking for for some, sometimes 20-plus years?
Uh, yes, councillor, there is a risk that they may refuse to, um, accept our LSPS the way it stands. Um, that means further negotiation. Uh, there's also a risk that the accelerated funding we receive to undertake our LEP review, um, we may be in breach of that contract if we don't make the 31st of March deadline.
Thank you, councillor Ayad. You had a question?
Yeah, so my question is through the chair. If it is changed to B4, what does that exclude? So, or basically, can you give me a list of things that can be included in B4?
Thank you, through the CEO.
Um, well, Mr Smith's already detailed some of the exclusions, which is recreational land. Um, there's also, uh, some industry that, um, was already existing in Warwick Farm. You also have issues around special purpose land, which would become a problem as we look to develop the bypass road in the future. Um, Mr Smith, is there anything you want to add to that?
No, I think through the, through the CEO, um, the, the main changes here just gives council and council laws the flexibility. As per the resolution now, uh, it's requesting us zone the entire Warwick Farm Horse Training Precinct B4. I mean, at, at the end of the day, as councillor Haggerty said, there is some, um, recreation space already in there. Um, we're dealing with that through the, the structure plan preparation. We know that's not council's intention to do that, but remembering that the local strategic planning statement is a high-level strategic document. The actual structure plan and the planning proposal will propose a B4 zone in that area, but it will also look at SP2 zone and whether or not we need some more recreation zone land or areas for community, um, facilities like, um, uh, libraries and community centres. So council still has the decision on the zones, but at the LSPS stage, if what you're wanting is mixed use, um, the issue is under the Act, uh, the minister and the minister's delegate are the ones that ultimately decide what zones they change. Council can propose that through a planning proposal. Um, but also under the Act for an LSPS, we can't make that LSPS unless the Greater Sydney Commission agrees. And the risk, as the CEO has suggested, is, uh, if the council doesn't vote for that, which is council's right, um, there may be a risk that, um, that that is delayed further and funding under the accelerated review is, is at risk.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, may I make a suggestion?
Uh, yes, councillor Chitty, what is your suggestion?
That as part of the motion, we note, um, that they are pretty much saying, do this, um, and it's not our choice. Um, but we also strongly note in there that we ask, we, we want the B4 in that area so that anyone that sees this notes that we're still heading down the track of the B4. That's our intent, that's what we want to do. But for obvious reasons, the GSC being one of them, we need to word the structure plan, or the, the, sorry, the local strategic planning statement.
Okay, so do you want that added in councillor Haggerty's motion or councillor Rhodes's?
Well, well, I think as much as I want to, and I, and I understand where councillor Rhodes is coming from, and we need to ensure that we get an outcome. And the way to get an outcome and to get it through the first stage is to keep them happy by saying, yes, the mix of uses, but also make our intent clear as council laws. And when we vote on it, we'll make it clear that we do want to see the B4 there. When the report comes in May, that's what I'd be expecting to see. Um, but in order to get over this hurdle, we need to keep some people happy and change some words.
Okay, councillor Haggerty and councillor Caliander, you happy with that extra point?
Uh, yep, it'd be noted that the final decision on the LSPS will be made by the Department of Planning, but that residents have requested B4 zoning. Um, yeah, but yeah.
All right.
Yeah, if I may, if I make a suggestion, if the mover and the second are happy with it, also to note that the bypass road is paramount and needed for people's safety in the area and it's something also that the residents would like to see happen there.
Councillor Haggerty and councillor Caliander, you happy with that extra point?
Yeah, sure, yep.
Yep, okay.
Sorry, sorry.
Right, can I just ask a, um, a question? Um, would adding, um, context of that nature, um, sort of, for, how would that kind of, um, work, stack up against the risk of it kind of, um, delaying this process and coming back?
Councillor, I can answer that in the sense that it's a suggestion. It's not actually saying, it's saying what we believe the residents want and it's, it's out of our hands. So we've put forward the view of what people feel, um, and what they expect. And I think it's up to people outside our scope to make that decision. Um, I think, given that moving to change, you know, I think we are moving to try and take up what everybody's saying, so, um, in good faith, so we can actually move on for the people of that area.
Yep, no, that's fine.
I don't think it's going to box the outcome, councillor.
Just to give a bit of additional context around the bypass road, if we can just include in that bypass road motion that that would need to be zoned, I guess, special purpose, is that right?
SP2, I believe, Mr Smith.
Yep.
Through, through the CEO, the, the final part, resolution five, is already on the books from last, uh, the December council meeting, but there's no problem including it again. And usually an SP2 zone for infrastructure being a, a local road.
Okay, good, thank you.
Um, and one, sorry, one last thing, it'd be noted at the number four, uh, maybe at the end of, uh, B4 zoning, comma, um, of which council is supportive of.
Okay. All right, we're going back to councillor Rhodes and councillor Hall's, um, motion. We've had a right of reply. I'm going to put their motion, but I'm going to ask who objects to this motion first. And I might do a roll call because of the way it is. Uh, councillor Haggerty, do you vote for this?
I vote against councillor Rhodes' motion.
Councillor Hall, do you vote for this? I would say yes. He seconded it. Um, councillor Haddid?
In favour.
Are you voting for or against councillor Rhodes and councillor Hall's motion?
Councillor Haggerty.
You're, you're against, yes. Councillor Balut?
Against, uh, councillor Rhodes.
Councillor Rhodes, you're voting for it, obviously. Obviously. Councillor Chitty?
Against.
Thank you. Councillor Caliander, councillor Ayad? Councillor Sheldon, I'm sorry, councillor Sheldon. We lost him again? Councillor Sheldon? Okay, moving on.
Yeah, I vote against.
Thank you, councillor Chitty?
I vote against.
And councillor Ayad?
Can you hear me?
Against.
Yeah.
You've got councillor Hattie twice, Madam Mayor.
And I'm against as well. Madam Mayor, you've got councillor-
As am I.
I'm worth two votes, councillor.
Councillor, you're not. Councillor, thank you, councillor Rhodes, that's enough, and councillor Chitty. All right, the motion has been lost. I'll put the foreshadowed motion as moved by councillor Haggerty and seconded by councillor Caliander. Those against, please, I'll-
Councillor Rhodes.
Yep. Councillor Hall.
Yeah, councillor Sheldon's against as well.
Okay, thank you. Any others against?
Councillor Hall?
Yes, I got you, councillor.
You've got it, sorry.
No, that's all right. Um, and those are for, I'm voting for. Councillor Haggerty?
Yep.
Caliander.
Caliander. Caliander, councillor Ayad?
Yep, I'm for.
Thank you. Councillor Balut?
Correct.
I think we've got everybody. Uh, is councillor Cali there? Be there somewhere? He was in on it earlier. Okay, well, we'll leave that at the moment and I declare that the foreshadowed motion is carried. Thank you. The next item is on page 196.
Mayor, can I move the furlough of this item for a period of three months?
Three months? Wait, can I ask the staff a question at this point? Because, um, is there a time-sensitive issue with these particular grants?
Uh, can I ask Miss Sangiliano if she's able to answer that question?
There was some time-sensitive, that's why we're putting the report up through the chair. Um, I just need to get the further clarification on what that was, the detail of that. Okay.
I'm willing to second councillor Hattie's motion.
Just before that goes through, I've got a question in relation to that, if I may.
Yes, councillor, what is your question?
Yeah, the question relates to page 197 with respect to the Bill Crews Charitable Trust. It talks about capturing new data that can be added to existing data to assess impact and change. Uh, first of all, is council going to have access to that data in any shape or form? Are we going to get a benefit in that regard from the harvesting of this data? And secondly, is council involved in the design of the questions and surveys that leads to the compiling of the data in the first place? And if it's to be taken on notice, that's fine.
I, I think we probably will have to take those on notice, so, um, I, I would be assuming that we will be able to access the data as somewhat pointless to do that type of research unless you make it available for your- as somewhat pointless to do that type of research unless you make it available to your local authority, but I'll take it on notice.
Yeah, it wasn't clear whether they're going to use it for their own purposes or, but anyway, thank.
Well, we're taking on notice, councillor. Have we found out if there's any time sensitive issues?
Sorry, madam mayor, can, just in, in that, in relation to that particular matter, it says in the objective that it'll collect datas, data around participant characteristics, service usage, amenities, sense of community, crime and safety, health and wellbeing, and, and global perceptions of change. So I'm assuming, am I right in assuming that any, I guess, outcome related to that data will feed into service provision and design of things in relation to those particular areas?
That would be my, my initial interpretation, but I'll get some further information for councillors as well.
All right, but while we're waiting for information, councillor Chitty, do you wish to speak to your motion?
Ma- Mayor, I only speak on that not because I don't want to give these groups funding, but if you look at the tasks they're undertaking and the climate we're in, if the, if the first one, for example, that we just spoke about involves people knocking on doors, we shouldn't be encouraging that. There's a couple for schools, we're trying to get people to stay away from each other, so I wouldn't be encouraging that either. It's, it's really based on the climate we're in. Should we be giving out funds for people to do projects that are going to put them, I suppose, in people's harm?
A good point, councillor. And I'd like to speak for the motion as well, madam mayor. Yeah, I'll just see if there's anybody wishes to speak against the three months.
I'll speak against the three months, just as a way to speak. What if, what if, as an alternative, what if we deferred it for a month, which allowed council staff time to get in contact with these organisations to say, you know, will you actually be spending it in the next three months or do you have another way to do this? Obviously with some of them, of course not, but the survey, they might, they might do a phone survey. Rather than kick it down the road for three months, let's give staff a month to actually contact these organisations and let them know, hey, you know, can we put this on hold?
I'm, I'm happy to take the timeframe off and yes, allow staff to do what they need to do, just in case it takes longer than a month or less than a month or whatever the case be, yes, absolutely.
All right, happy with that.
And.
Just a, just a question, madam mayor. Madam mayor, question?
Sorry, I was on mute. Yes, councillor Hall, go ahead.
Right, when this comes up again in three months' time, we'll be looking at this and I, I imagine we're either going to approve it or not approve it. I have a question on one of the items there. The item on reducing single-use plastic water bottles. I would like council to assess that a little bit further. To me, that looks like it's asset-driven and not necessarily what it's claiming to be. That is just, to my mind of thinking, a water cooler. I don't think council should be giving funding to that amount for a water cooler.
Councillor, can I take that on notice and we'll get some more information back for you before you come back to, to assess, make a final decision?
Can I, madam mayor, make a suggestion to an amendment to that motion?
Yes, well, we have an amendment at the moment, so you're.
I want to make an amendment to the motion that you've got.
All right, what is it?
At the moment on the screen.
What is it, councillor?
That the item be deferred until applicants can be contacted and projects can be assessed with the current coronavirus issues in mind and a report brought back to council.
Okay, are the mover and second are happy with that? You are the second of council. Councillor Rhodes?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay, I think that's pretty straightforward. Councillors, is there any objections to this motion? I'll put it, those in favour?
Yes.
Yep.
Yes.
Who's, who's that? I missed a name, sorry.
Caliander.
Councillor Caliander's against, anybody else against?
Sorry, I was for.
Oh, you're for, sorry.
Maybe you should ask madam mayor if anybody's against it.
I just did.
And nobody answered.
No, we got everybody in favour, so thank you, the motion's carried. The next item's on page 304.
So that's mine, madam mayor, is it?
It is yours.
Thank you very much for the report back. Look, I'm happy with the response. I'm happy that council is purchasing artwork. I'm a little bit curious as to where we hang the paintings.
Oh, I can, councillor?
Yeah, go on.
They're in a lot of our facilities and offices, they actually move around quite a bit. And it's also because they need to be looked after and cleaned and attended to, that we do have a, if you ever want to go down to the powerhouse, they can show you through the collection. But they circulate the paintings throughout all our offices, that's why we've.
So they, the, the interesting point was that this was, you know, for art that might be appropriate for the new civic centre. And the report basically said that, well, it's not an art gallery, so therefore we couldn't hang it there. Is that right? So we don't have, we can only really hang this artwork in a place like the powerhouse?
No, not necessarily, councillor.
Not necessarily?
I would find that, I don't think that would be the case. I mean, there might be spaces, like you might have a very unusual space that you can't put something in and may need some, we see, we've got, at the powerhouse in our collection, we've got things like little bits of furniture and, and sculptures and all sorts of things. But if you really want to have a tour, I'd suggest you talk to Craig and organise to go down there and have a look at some of the works, because.
No, I'm, I'm very happy that council is already participating and purchasing artwork from those competitions from the local artists, so I'm very happy, thank you very much.
Sorry, madam mayor, in, this might help clarify councillor Rhodes's question. On the other page, it says that any artworks to be displayed in the civic centre would need longevity. So I, from that, I would say that it's rather a question of protecting the artworks and making sure that wherever it's displayed, it can be done safely.
And also be appropriate to that space as well. Which you would expect, yeah, because I'm very happy. A different, inverted commas. Okay, thank you for that, you're next, you're the next one as well, councillor.
Yeah, the next one again, madam mayor, thank you very much for the report and I appreciate that we're members of WHO, the Global Network for Age-Friendly Cities and Communities, and acknowledge that it's not an accreditation for age friendliness, just a network of interested age friendliness type ideas. Look, the only thing I would like to put up a motion, because I believe there is a lot more work that we could do in this area to engage with the aged people in the community. And the motion would be that council prepare a report of all identified areas of opportunity for council to better engage the aged community and presented at the age workshops in December 2020, where the following is addressed. Suitable changes to notification periods for DAs in consideration of the age. Suitable changes to methods of distribution of notification to the age. Suitable changes to communications to the age on age relevant matters. And possible council-run daily aged care facilities where their social and personal daily needs are catered for, such as meals. And I only want that to be in the report, so it's addressed as different ideas.
Thank you, councillor, do you have a second, um?
Madam mayor, I have a question.
Yes, what is your question?
I, in the, in the report, is councillor Rhodes intending for work to be done around looking at the feasibility of, of council actually taking on the running of an aged care facility? I was just a bit confused.
Okay, may I answer, madam mayor?
Yes, certainly, go ahead, councillor.
Okay, no, not aged care facilities per se where people stay, but certainly aged care facilities which cater for their social and personal daily needs and perhaps provides meals. It is, we have aged, we have childcare facilities which do a similar thing.
We, we do have.
Could it be addressed?
Councillor, we do have daycare facilities that are organised by NGOs where older folk are bussed in to do various activities and it often includes a meal as well and then they're taken home at the end of the day, just so you know that those sort of activities are.
Do. Well, in the, I'm looking forward to the workshop in December and if those things could be addressed, that would be fantastic.
Thank you, councillor, is there any?
Um, there's, sorry.
Spot on, just to stop a minute, it's moved by councillor Rhodes, seconded by.
Me too.
Thank you, councillor Hall, continue councillor Haggerty.
Yeah, I was just going to suggest, can we have a little bit in there about culturally appropriate aged care, not aged care, but support?
Service.
Senior support, yeah, yeah. It is a bit of a problem.
Can I just say for the council's information that one of the problems with our aging population and it's unfortunately a biological fact, that because of changes in the brain, especially where people spoke another language in their youth, and this explains why we have a lot of particularly culturally specific activities happening more and more, is they lose their ability to speak English and resort back to their original language. And that is why you're getting very specific cultural happenings, like particular nursing homes and so on. Just thought I'd share that with you because it is something you don't really think about unless you run into it. So just, sorry, I just needed to add that for the council's information.
Thank you, madam mayor, that was what I was getting at.
Councillor Haggerty's extra item?
Can I also suggest where there is that reference to suitable changes to communications, specify sort of, specify looking at how we communicate with, with older people, older people from culturally and linguistically diverse backgrounds? Because obviously, the, the way that, you know, communication may occur in different communities must be taken into account. So, you know, people from a culturally and linguistically diverse background are less likely to engage with, for example, local newspapers, they're less likely to engage with council's website or social media. So the way that they find out about council's programmes or initiatives is through entirely different streams.
That is very true, councillor, thank you. Is there any opposition to this motion? I'll put it, those in, against, please speak up. Then it's moved unanimously, thank you.
Yeah, I'll vote against.
Thank you, councillor.
I'll vote against.
Okay, got you.
Yeah, thank you.
Yep, the next item on the, is councillor Hall, membership of planning panels. No, I'm sorry, there's one more here.
Yeah, thank you.
Liverpool Community Hub, I apologise, I skipped you.
Yep, no, thank you very much. Look, happy with the report and everything back. I do have a motion and I'll put it up and see what people think of it. The motion is that council prepare a report to be provided to the May council meeting on the cost to provide portable air monitoring stations to be made available for use throughout the LGA on a similar basis as the council cameras. And B, a timeframe where if determined to proceed, where the air monitoring stations could be in operation.
Thank you, councillor, and I commend you for asking for a report on the matter first. Okay, second, councillor Hall, I'm assuming. Anybody wish to speak, do you want to speak to your motion first, councillor?
Yes, look, madam mayor, I'm very, very impressed with what council has done in the way of the, of the mobile cameras, the portable cameras that they have engaged into the Liverpool LGA and I can see what a great success that they are having. The issues about air quality concern me a great deal. It's extremely relevant to Liverpool considering the dissection of different roadways that we have going through our great city, which is both a blessing and the curse. And the curse is the effects upon our air quality. Having, having the mobile air monitoring stations, which I believe are available, I think that would enable us as a council to have a, not, not only a baseline on where we are situated now, but we would be able to pick up in, in areas where we believe that certain industries are doing the wrong thing and it's very difficult to, to actually catch them in the act of doing this. But the portable air monitoring stations would enable us to do that. So it's for, for two purposes, one is to get a basis, a, a basis on what our air quality is at the moment, particularly around areas of great traffic. We're, we're in a bit of a valley here in Liverpool and I think all councillors are aware that, you know, all the smog and dirt and grit and everything does seem to hover into this Liverpool Valley. And it's just something that I would like to see council to become more proactive in it and I believe that the portable air monitoring stations might give us the opportunity to improve the livability of people in, in Liverpool.
Thank you, councillor, does anybody wish to speak against the motion?
Just a quick question.
Not to speak against it, madam mayor, but just a proposal, the, would councillor Rhodes be interested in putting in preparer reports dealing with cost and also the effectiveness of portable air monitoring stations, including those terms? So for example, if the wind's blowing from the north on one day and from the east, you'll get a slightly different result. Or if it's on a weekend when there's extra heavy traffic movements, you get a slightly different result. That would be useful as well, so if cost and effectiveness of the portable air monitoring stations was there, the, looks opt in anyway, but if that's satisfactory, I'd encourage that to be included.
Thank you, councillor, no problem with that, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any opposition to the motion?
No, ma'am, not opposition, but can I ask a question if you don't mind? Yes, the report is coming back, but if council collects all this data, what's it going to do with it?
That's a good question, councillor.
Can I answer that, madam mayor?
No, I'll, I'll ask the CEO and if you have extra information, you can add it later, just let the CEO answer that question, please.
I might have to take that one slightly on notice, I mean, the, the department, Department of Planning and the Environment already do air quality monitoring and there is in fact a dashboard that people are able to look at. I, I assume we could use this data to, to lobby and agitate for better environmental outcomes in our area. I, I'd have to have a further look at what smaller portable air monitoring stations may be able to provide that work that Deepie already does, doesn't provide, but we can bring that back in the report.
That'd be great, thank you.
Thank you very much, is there any opposition? Anybody wish to vote against this motion? I'll put it, those in favour, it's unanimous. The next item is also in councillor Rhodes's name and that is on Qo4, page 310.
Yes.
Oh, sorry, sorry, I'll declare a conflict of, I missed this one, because I'll declare a non-significant, non-percevalary conflict of interest and stay in the virtual room, I'm the chair of the MRC.
Okay then, thank you, councillor.
Yes, madam mayor, once again, I think, thank council very much for the report. My only concern that I have with this is that I believe that it would be very prudent of council to delay funding for operations that require person-to-person contact again until we have a better handle on the, the current virus.
Councillor, madam mayor, if you don't mind, I believe that the community hubs are currently closed due to these issues. Miss Sangiliana, can you confirm that for me? I, I'm pretty sure I'm correct.
Sorry, sorry, I must have been on mute, sorry, yes, I can confirm through the CEO. Sorry, Kirsten, I was on mute, I thought I was unmuted. We, we have, I can confirm that we've suspended activity at its current stage, given the Department of Education guidelines on exclusion of excursions and other activities outside of the normal school programme.
Excellent, thank you very much, I'm happy with that. Excellent, thank you very much, I'm happy with that, madam mayor.
Thank you councillor, um, wait a minute, I'll just check, there was no motion attached to this, was there, no?
No, I withdrew the motion.
Thank you, the next item is question with notice councillor Hall, membership of planning panels.
Yes, thank you, madam mayor, for the, I've been supplied with the answers. My problem is that, uh, at the moment, uh, on you and I are the chair, are the, um, community members on those planning panels. And unfortunately, uh, for a few of these meetings, you have been unable to, for various reasons, to attend, which means I'm the only one. And it makes it a bit difficult when I oppose what the other members want to do. So, it looks like it's one against, uh, one against three. Would be nice if we had another person there who at least agreed with the councillors.
Well, we have, councillor Hall, we have two reserves, we have councillor Hagerty and councillor County, but both reserves for that panel. Uh, and I know my apologies were in advance given to the panel, so if they didn't, uh, if the reserves couldn't attend, it's unfortunate that that's how it was. I'm conscious councillor Hagerty was present, um, even though we were doing, um, virtual reality, um, he was present representing you, I think, the other day. So, um, I'm afraid it's the luck of the draw, but I take your point, continue on, I apologize.
What I'm suggesting is that we put an additional person on there just in case, uh, we, we, we don't have any of the other two alternatives presently able to come. And the second issue is, on the community panel, there is only one community member. Unlike with our Greater Sydney West planning panel, there are two coun- two councillors and three state-appointed. But on the local planning panel, it's only one community person and three, uh, council-appointed, if you like. Can we look at that later and make, do the same? In other words, there's five people on the panel, two are community and three from the council planners and so on.
Um, may I suggest that you request a report on the, um, ability for council to have additional representation and additional community members and we'll see what that brings forth and that might sort it all out and bring that back to council.
Sounds good.
Okay, are you happy with that councillor?
Yes, thank you.
Uh, Hall, seconded by...
I'll second it.
Councillor Rhodes, is there any opposition?
Who's that person?
Who's that person? Councillor Hall and councillor Rhodes are moving that particular.
But we're, sorry, we're, sorry mayor, we're nominating somebody else to be an additional member.
No, no, uh, we're not nominating, we're calling for a report to be brought back to the council about the feasibility of additional members. We're not, not nominating anybody. Okay, so I'll put it...
Madam mayor? Sorry, madam mayor, but could we put an additional member on the Greater Sydney West planning panel as well?
To be honest, you can do, you can, I would say you call on a report to investigate the ability of additional people on both. And then, that way we get back whether we can or we can't, because they're not our panels, so.
Yes, I agree, thank you.
S- sorry mayor and sorry councillor Hall, I think what he's intending to do, if I understand right, we've currently got two reserves.
Yep.
Can we nominate another councillor as a reserve in case those two reserves can't make it? So that we're always, we, we gotta pick a reserves.
Exactly.
I, I understand what councillor Hall's doing, but I think he's happy to get something back that says, this is the mechanism, this is what we do. And to make sure that we're not doing anything we shouldn't do, given they're not our panels. I mean, we've got, we're entitled to two and we're entitled to two reserves. I would assume quite off the bat, we would be entitled to three reserves if we wished, but I have no way of knowing that at this point.
Thanks, ma'am.
Thank you. So, I'm going to move it, those against? I'll put it, those in favour, carried unanimously. Next item is councillor AR, Memorial School of Arts.
Madam mayor, I'm happy with this response. Now, with reference to this, I may put up a, uh, motion next council meeting, um, but I'm happy with what's in the book, thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much councillor, I appreciate that. Okay, then, starting, she turns the page, um, councillor Tiddy, local infrastructure contributions.
I'll submit further questions to that mayor, but thank you for the answers.
I keep muting and then having a problem getting my finger muted. Thank you for that councillor, councillor Tiddy, you're the next one up, contamination reports.
Yes, ma'am, thank you again for the response, I'll pretty much move the response as a nom, as a, sorry, as a motion.
Right.
That we undertake surveys from companies that have provided contamination reports as part of their DA assessment.
Okay, moved by councillor Tiddy, we've got a second up?
I second it, councillor Hagerty.
Councillor did seconding.
Can I, sorry, can I just, uh, ask a question in relation to the surveys?
Certainly.
Um, uh, what sort of, um, aspects of the process, um, were you intending to kind of get feedback on?
Thanks councillor, if I may through you, ma'am. O- obviously, these companies do work for wide-ranging councils. Um, and it's really to get their feedback on how our processes are and what we're requiring compared to other councils. We, we don't wanna make things easy for anyone, we wanna do things right, correct, in a timely manner. Uh, but we just need to ensure, uh, are we going, are we doing too much, are we doing too little? What is it that we're doing? And how can we help anyone that's dealing with council improve the service there, if it needs improvement?
So, is this, um, through you, madam mayor, is this sort of like a, a benchmarking exercise?
Pretty, pretty much, but hearing it from the horse's mouth, if I can use those, if I can use that.
Shame it's not Moorick Farm, okay, um, any other questions or queries around this? Uh, I think it's pretty straightforward, councillors, who would like to, um, vote against this motion? I take it that it's unanimous. Thank you very much councillor Tiddy, the next item is...
Yeah, I'll vote against it.
Thank you councillor Sheldon.
You play, thank you councillor.
Do you wanna...
No, I vote against it.
Do you wanna...
Hello?
We can hear you here.
No, can we hear, yeah, we can hear you councillor.
Are you unhearing me? Yeah, thank you.
You can read, next item is under councillor Tiddy's name, Civic Place.
Civic Place, Moorbank Recyclers first, ma'am?
Yep. Uh, did I skip one, sorry? Oh yes, I apologize, yes, I was a bit enthusiastic, next one?
That's fine. Thank you for the response and given now the announcement, it's, it was pretty much coming along the lines of this council started something and I would have loved to have seen this council, uh, one way or the other end this, whether it was yes or no. Given now that we've probably got to find ourselves stuck in these chairs for another 12 months. I, I think we now have a little bit more time in relation to that. But can I just say something on, um, that the DA's planning proposals and everything else, um, that we've currently got in the system and I'm sure staff are doing their best to, to process these and either approve or refuse. But I think on the other side of all these issues that we're facing, there's one thing that's gonna get the economy going again and that is construction. And I think it's an opportune time that we ensure we do all we can in the, in, following the correct processes to ensure that when we do come out the other end, um, there's enough there to kickstart the economy again. And obviously, construction will kickstart the economy. I'm not saying approve everything just because we need to kickstart the economy. But what I'm saying is, this is probably a time for us to start getting a lot of projects ready and things like these ones, uh, will be welcomed once we come out the other side of this. If we're gonna approve.
I think, I think the state and federal government have worked that out too councillor. Okay, um, we have a mover, councillor Tiddy, we've got a second up?
There's nothing to move or second, ma'am.
No, we didn't move anything. Sorry, you're just happy with the response. Okay, thank you, the next item is Civic Place.
Yeah. Yeah, I'll let that go for now, but I will be submitting something through, actually, can we go into closed session, uh, quickly at the end to discuss this?
Okay councillor, why, because on financial grounds?
On speaking about, um, yes, contractual issues and financial grounds.
Okay, so I think that's...
Whatever, sorry, whatever clause that is, sorry.
10 to A, B or C, but anyway, I'll, I'll be, I'll let the council staff work out which A, B, C it is. Okay then, we'll move into, um, is that seconded by anybody?
I'll second that, madam mayor.
Thank you councillor Baloot. I'll put it, those in favour, those against, the clerk carried, going to closed session to discuss that in, that question. The next item is councillor Baloot and it's cyber security and operating expenditure.
We'll wait for the answers there, madam mayor.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Baloot, forum in national redress scheme of survivors of institutional sexual assault.
Same thing.
Thank you. Uh, councillor Baloot again.
Same thing.
Thank you. Uh, councillor Hagerty. You're waiting on a response. Uh, councillor Shelton, event cancellations and you responded...
Yes, well, I was also waiting for response.
Yep.
Yeah, thank you.
The Baloot Civic Place, so you're waiting for the response.
Yep, thank you.
Now we go to, uh, noms and we have a few people here with, um, percuturing and non-percunery, so those that are gonna go make a coffee, please do.
Oh, look, look, uh, to save everyone leaving the room, I'm happy to withdraw this nom, um, if someone else is happy to withdraw theirs.
Uh, which one are you talking about councillor?
Uh, well, I'll withdraw nom four, um, and, uh...
Not one.
Uh, yes, I'm nom one, if councillor AR withdraws nom four, we can, we can both, in the spirit of bipartisanship and the current crisis we're in, we can both withdraw those noms if she's happy.
Councillor AR, do you wish to withdraw?
Madam mayor, if councillor Hagerty is ha- is withdrawing, I will withdraw, but you have to formally withdraw and then...
I'll second both of those, madam mayor.
Thank you councillor.
I am happy to formally withdraw, thank you madam.
Okay, we're all withdrawn and we're all out of the kitchen and back in front of our, our computers. Thank you for your caringness people. Nom 02, future of waste, councillor Kellyanda.
Uh, thanks madam mayor, look, in the interest of brevity, I've provided some background there. I imagine councillors have, um, have gone through that in, in terms of the motion and so I'll just put the motion.
Paul. Um, thank you councillor, councillor, a minute, seconded by...
County.
Happy to second up with an amendment. Councillor County, by everybody, has been here all along, but he had a technical issue with his buttons. So, um, he will talk to the staff about the way he voted after the meeting, if that's okay with everybody. All right, future of waste moved by councillor Kellyanda, seconded by...
There is an amendment, madam mayor, I'd like an amendment considered.
Well, amendment up councillor, but it's whether or not the mover will accept it, what is your amendment?
Just an additional point E. Continues to investigate all waste to energy opportunities.
Are you happy with that councillor Kellyanda?
Yep, happy with that.
You can't, happy with that councillor County?
Yep.
Thank you. Um, is there any real discussion?
Yes, ma'am, I just got one question through you to the CEO. We've spoken about, um, this, um, waste to energy probably out 12 months ago. Um, and please, if I have missed it, did something ever come back in relation to us doing, uh, what we could, um, in that area?
Uh, we've had a number of meetings with the, with the EPA and with a number of waste to energy providers, um, to try and get some guidance. It's still a bit of an unknown space at the moment, um, so no, nothing's come back formally. Uh, but we have been trying to progress things as, as far as we can. At this point in time, um, the EPA aren't enormously supportive of waste to energy facilities, as you're probably aware. Uh, but they did express that they were open to considering this as they started to, um, get some more information about their waste management in general.
So, further to that then, are we able to then put something together to go to them and say, here is why you should be supporting, um, waste to energy? Do we need to do the background work?
Uh, one of the things that they did indicate, and, um, this would probably require a resolution of council for me to act on, um, was that it was, the lack of support from the community was one of the key reasons that they weren't enormously supportive to waste to energy. So, this could potentially be something that we could look at for the community strategic plan or the DPOP and determine whether the community are tolerant of waste to energy facilities and that would likely get greater support from the EPA. Um, the EPA hasn't been, um, that engaged with this area for some times, uh, to be frank.
We're, we're sorry ma'am, if I can further, uh, if you go to the community and say, are you supportive of waste to energy, they're gonna say no, I can pretty much assure you that. But if we do the background work to show the, if there are any benefits, how it works, how it doesn't work, and then go to the community with that, we, we may find that we'd get a different response. So, what I'm pretty much asking, can we do that background work that shows benefits, if any? Um, in going down that track, how it looks like, what it looks like, and then going to the community?
Yeah, absolutely councillor, that, yeah, yeah.
Sorry, and through you, madam mayor, I think it's also important to acknowledge that there were reasons behind community opposition and anything, you know, put forward into the future um, takes, takes account of those reasons for opposition and, you know, also outlines why, um, you know, proposals may, maybe, may look very different to that.
Yes, that, that's a given councillor, thank you.
Sorry, so does this mean from council to do that, or is that something you can do without directions?
Uh, look, I can do that without direction, that...
But it's been added to the motion councillor, leave it there please, type us. Um, I think that having it in the motion gives us a sense of history as well. Um, and the people know... Sorry, councillor Sheldon, was it?
Say something in this regard.
Councillor did.
But the issue of the waste is very big issue actually now. And local government in New South Wales doing a lot of work and lobbying with the federal and state government in this regard. Because I don't know if you are aware, the federal government wants to stop the export of the waste overseas. This is one, secondly, we haven't got, uh, recycle, uh, uh, companies to deal with it in the New South Wales or, or on Australia, you know what I mean? So, it would cost, uh, local government and all councils a lot of money. It would be a cost shifting, uh, for us, to be honest with you. So, this is why local government in New South Wales lobbying, the state and federal government to give us some sort of subsidies to deal with the issue if the government go ahead and stop the export of the waste overseas. Because we can't handle it here.
Thank you councillor did for that update, um, but I agree, we do need to probably present, um, options to the community so that it's not the rumor or whatever that's out there and I thank you for that. Okay, you happy with that addendum to your, your motion councillor Kellyanda?
I am, madam mayor.
Thank you. Is there any opposition? I'll put it, those in favour, those against, the clerk carried. The next item is, she hopes, um, save Liverpool Animal Shelter, which I have to say, we've received legal advice on this councillor AR and it actually should be deemed as a rescission motion and, um, is, is basically out of order unless it's deemed, unless you deal with it as a rescission motion from the last council meeting.
Madam mayor, thank you for that, I'm happy to deal with that as a rescission motion.
Mm-hmm.
Am, am I able now to do that on the floor of council, I mean, how does that work?
Well, you conclude that the meeting, the, uh, motion that was presented to the last council meeting and I wasn't present, whatever it was, um, be deemed as rescission and be replaced by this motion.
I'll, I'll, I'll object to that.
And I'll object to that, okay.
Can I, can I ask ma'am, and thank you for noting the legal advice has been received?
Yes.
Um, how, how is it not in order? If we're just asking for a bit of land to be looked at for possible permitted extra use? Can I just ask that if you don't mind?
I will direct that to the CEO because the advice...
Thank you. Yeah, thank you.
Uh, not having been present when that advice came in, I'll have to, um, ask Miss Espinoza if she can provide information on that one.
Through, through the CEO, I can, I can assist.
Thank you, Mr Smith.
Thank you. Uh, so the, the, the motion put forward is one, allow animal shelters be permitted, uh, use of the land on, on the, on those blocks of land and delegate to the CEO to prepare the amendment and report back to council at its next meeting. The resolution from earlier, uh, last council meeting requires a report back to council, uh, in April, I believe, looking at the land that council actually owns, of which it could be this site as well. Um, and so that work is underway and a report will be sent back to council in April. Um and so that work is underway and a report will be sent back to council in April. The effect of this resolution is, is saying, put it on this site and zone the land effectively. So the process to go through, if council wishes to do that, is can delegate to the CEO um a, a, a report to come back to council um for a planning proposal. We have to send it to the local planning panel first and then to council and then off to gateway.
Can I ask Mr Smith um with regards to the previous motion that's been enacted?
Absolutely, so we're underway now, Madam Mayor.
Well, then that's your grounds for um this being treated differently because it's actually asking for um the other sites and so on. So it's trying to overshadow the um previous motions, so it is out of order. Um councillor Ayad, I would suggest if you want to do something on this matter, that you talk to our legal people and maybe prepare something at the next council meeting.
So, sorry ma'am, in, in the spirit of, obviously we're online and everyone trying to get work done, I, I, I don't, sorry, and I'm not legal. But I don't agree that council, yes, take, take away for a minute the actual title of the motion. Um which, you know, you, you can title a motion anything, but look at the actual motion itself.
Hmm.
This is not saying, put it there. This is saying, allow that piece of land, should council choose, and I'm not saying I'm for or against this motion. Uh, uh, prepare something that allows animal shelters to be permitted on that site. Similarly to council receiving any changes where we did for kahards, for example, or car facilities and anything else. This motion is not saying, put it there. This motion is simply asking for uh permitted, an extra permitted use. And pull aside the title of motion, the, the body of it is, I, I, I can't see how it's out of order.
Well, I'm sorry councillor, I have to say that I have to take legal advice in um, you know, in not saying, while I personally agree with you. I would be, I think, defaulting my position if I ignored legal advice regardless of my personal view. Um the previous motion has been enacted and gave council staff clear direction on what to do. That is why I'm saying to councillor Ayad, speak to our legal people. I'm not saying it's dead in the water, I'm just saying this particular thing, it is out of order. And maybe a different motion be put up at the next meeting and that may actually fix whatever the problem is. I doubt within the next three to four weeks that the situation will be changed dramatically. So it is in the favour of goodwill.
Thank you, ma'am.
But, Madam Mayor, if I may, this is more so an extension from the motion that was moved at the last council meeting. And I mean, I don't want to repeat everything that councillor Hachidi said, but in light of that, could maybe staff now assist in changing the wording? Because this is so important to the community.
Yes, look, I understand that councillor Ayad, and I think what we're saying to you, that the previous motion has been enacted. When a motion is enacted, you can't actually rescind it because it's enacted. So this motion is actually, I appreciate what you're doing and I personally don't disagree, but I, as the mayor, I can't, as the chair of this meeting, I go against legal advice I've been given. So that's why I'm saying to you, I would, if I was you, um this motion just be discarded. And if, I know what you're trying to do, um sit down with the council staff and get the wording. So it's, so there isn't any loopholes or whatever and you get the desired response. I don't believe anything in the next three to four weeks, especially given the situation we're in at the moment, um will change those sites, so.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Now, am I able to put this motion, a new motion forward at the next council meeting or do I have to wait the three months?
No, no, you can put it up as an NOM, um but it is a rescission, it would have to be, that's the, that's the discussion you have to have with the council staff. So that we, we don't have a problem and there may be some way of doing that. So rather than have it, have us all sit here and scratch our heads till, you know, sunrise. Um I would suggest you sit down, explain to the staff what you want to do and let's work on how we get it around the corner, okay?
Thank you, Madam.
Ma'am, ma'am, thank you for your explanation and I'm on board with you. Similar to other times, we've received legal notice in relation to motions that are out of order. Can that legal no- uh advice please be circulated to councillors?
Certainly, I'll ask the person that gave that advice to do that, um through the CEO.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Can I just say, Madam Mayor, I appreciate your advice as well, having made a mistake in a previous motion. That's exactly what needs to be done. Thank you.
Thank you, you're welcome.
Just a suggestion, could this all be solved with a phone call? So could councillor Ayad give council staff a phone call tomorrow and go, he's, he's the spirit of what I intend? And council staff.
Councillor Hagerty, the matter is dealt with, the matter is that it is, I'm not going to proceed. Councillor Ayad has agreed to sit down with staff and we'll sort out some way to move forward on this. I understand what she's trying to do and I think we just make, we make sure that we're not doing anything that causes any upset and we can move forward on it. So let's just stop there. Um and now moving on to the confidential items. And the first one is the recycling material acceptance processing centre on page 1298. Oh, hold on, it's a confidential item, so if you're going to discuss it, we are moving into confidential session. So um if you wish to discuss it in that forum. Yeah, you can. 1298. Any confidential document? Recommendations on page 1299.
I'll move recommendations, thank you, Madam Mayor.
I second it, Madam Mayor.
I second it, Madam Mayor.
We've got three seconders. Okay, we've got a mover, councillor Rhodes and a Shilton and a second at councillor Rhodes. And thank you to the third person. Um any disagreement with the recommendation? All right, I'm gonna put it, that's against.
I'll vote against, ma'am, thank you.
Thank you councillor Hachidi is voting against. Anybody else? Okay, everybody else is for, so that helps the typist. Thank you. The next item is the Phillips Park development, which is on page 1321.
Move that way. Councillor Hagerty.
Yep.
Yeah, I'll second it.
Councillor Shilton.
I have a question, Madam Mayor.
Certainly.
Um. When we say uh that we're going to provide sufficient funds to pro- for the proposed master plan. Is that going to be affected now by the coronavirus?
I'll ask the ca- ask the CEO to answer that question.
Sorry, for, for the master plan or for the redevelopment?
No, the master plan. Will, will the funds be available to do the master plan?
Uh yes, my understanding is yes. At the moment, at the moment, construction is a, um, is a um essential service. And construction activities are still able to be undertaken.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? We've got a mover, councillor Hagerty is seconded. Any opposition? I'll put it, those in favour, those against, carried unanimously. The next item's on page 1337.
I'll move that, Madam Mayor, and I've got a question.
Okay, councillor Shilton.
I will second Madam Mayor Kellyanda.
You have a question too? Okay, councillor Sheldon, what is your question?
Yes, the question, and can we take it on notice if you want? Disturbance items estimated at $70,000. It looks like vacant land. I'm just wondering what the disturbance items would be, that amount to $70,000 and that can be taken on notice.
Uh I will take that one on notice, thank you councillor.
I appreciate that.
For disturbance on vacant land.
Thank you so much for that. Um any opposition? Then I'll take that the motion is adopted unanimously.
Thank you.
We now will move into confidential session to discuss councillor. Councillor Hachidi's motion on. What it was, I have totally forgot.
Norm five.
Norm five, thank you whoever's listening.
No, sorry, sorry.
And at this point, I would like to thank everybody very much for their cooperation.
Okay, Madam, Madam Mayor.
We haven't, we haven't dealt with nom 05.
Uh 05.
Hold on, bear with me, I've got to go back to my book.
So councillor Hachidi was, uh question with notice 10.
I apologize councillor Ayad, we were, I'm a bit too keen to get into confidential. Well, that's done anyway, that's something. Okay, so councillor, you have the motion on page 338.
That's right, so nom 05, I'd like to move that.
Mm-hmm. Have you a seconder?
I'll second that, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Baloot. Okay, I am, would you like to speak to your motion?
I would, so. Look, the reason I put this up now, um I would love to see Civic Place come to fruition because that is going to transform our city centre. My issue is the increase in how much it's costing. Um it's a massive increase. Ratepayers deserve to know about this increase and where their money is going. And I think that can, community consultation is really, really important with a project so big. Um I'd really like to see this get up. Yes. Um and it's a testament for all of us who are elected councillors. We're here for the community, we have to hear the community's opinions on this and know what the community wants on this. And I cannot justify $195 million because the jump is just too big.
Can I uh forshad our motion?
Yes, certainly, well, don't tell us, um we'll just, um that was the speaker for. Would you like to speak against the motion councillor?
Yes, um while, two points. One, I think we've undertaken community consultation. However, if we want to undertake more community consultation, I'm happy for that to happen. However, um to undertake no further work until this has been completed, to be frank, in the, in, in the economic climate we're in is, is, is reckless and dangerous. Um we saw during the GFC that, that when we threw money at construction, it, it saved jobs, it saved the economy. Um I've spoken to some people who know about these things and a project of this size will employ about 250 to 300 people. Um we, we, we don't have the means that the state government and the federal government do in terms of stimulus. We can't send checks to everyone, we can't, you know, give tax breaks. What we can do is move forward as, as quickly as practical on a $200 million or $400 million construction project. That will bring 250 to 300 workers into the CBD straight away. It'll keep people employed, it'll keep food on, on table, it'll keep roofs above heads. And you've got to remember that when these people are working, they're also going to get a coffee, they're going to get lunch. Um they're going to keep cafes and restaurants in Liverpool going. Um if, if there's anything that we, you know, we had, we had a chat at the beginning of this um meeting about what we're doing in Liverpool in regards to coronavirus and keeping the economy afloat. This is the single biggest thing that we can do right now. Get moving, build this project, keep people employed and pump a couple hundred million dollars.
If I may.
No, I'm still talking.
No, councillor, he's allowed to speak uninterrupted as you are, so councillor Hagerty, continue.
Uh as I was saying, this, this is a, the, 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 the easiest, quickest way that we can pump a cou- a couple hundred million dollars into the economy. Uh and keep a couple hundred people employed. So uh it would be reckless to not do so.
Madam Mayor, can I make a suggestion to councillor Ayad as the mover?
Sorry, my, my mute wasn't cooperating. Okay, thank you very much councillor Hagerty. Any speakers for the motion?
Can I make a suggestion, Madam Mayor, if I may, to councillor Ayad?
Yep.
Firstly, in relation to public consultation, yes, let's do what we can, but obviously it can't be face to face. Um given the climate we're in, just to ensure that we don't do that. But can I also suggest to my fellow councillor? The, that, that we don't stop the work on the actual DA process that is currently happening. It's currently in place. Um let that run its course. We can talk about costs and financial impacts and everything else down the track. But given that we've started the process on getting approvals in place, I think it's, I, I think we need to continue with those approvals. Um and we can have a separate discussion about costs and everything else. Uh but let's not at this stage stop approvals going through if they do, you know, get approved.
Thank you councillor, so we've had one speaker call, we've kind of.
Yes, through you, Madam Mayor, I am on the immediate undertaking extensive community consultation. Uh yes, I do agree with that. Now, I wonder when we have done our community consultation, did the community now that it has escalated to 195 million? Uh and could be more with variations, so that's a concern for me. If the community was informed of that. Uh but I do agree with councillor Hachidi that we should continue doing what we're doing. Uh and ensure that all the costs and the uh other relevant stuff is um, is being double and triple checked. And everything is good.
Right. Okay then, thank you. We had two speakers for, two speakers against. Madam Mayor. Put the motion.
Madam Mayor.
No, sorry, hold on.
Ayad, you have the right of reply, I apologize.
Madam Mayor, with regard to what councillor Hagerty said. Um look, I'm not against development, I've never been against development. I can see that councillor Hagerty has had a change of heart. And I'm not willing to give out.
Point of order.
Payers' money.
Point of, hold on councillor Ayad, yes councillor.
What have I, what have I had a change of heart in regards to?
Clearly about development.
No, point of order, I've never been against development.
And about, and about DA, now I'm not against the DA being um.
Councillor Ayad, you're out of order. Would you please stop and you apologize to councillor Hagerty for that innuendo?
Madam Mayor, I'm, I'm just taking my right of reply, Madam.
You are allowed to take your.
Had a change of heart, Madam.
Not to impinge on other people's reputations.
I feel like you've had a change of heart, which is wonderful, it's a wonderful thing, it's very positive.
Point of order.
Sorry, Madam. What's your point of order councillor Hagerty?
Again, innuendo about, that I have been against develop, I've never been against development.
I uphold that because um I would uphold that point of order because it's a personal view. Councillor, can I warn you to stop making personal views on your fellow councillors and keep to the facts? Thank you councillor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, can I please, in light of what my councillor colleagues have brought to light? I just, can I just have a minute just to review my motion?
Certainly councillor.
Thank you.
Do we have a second of the councillor Hagerty's motion?
I'm happy to second.
Thank you councillor. Yep.
But Madam Mayor, I've decided, can I just have my, yep. Immediately, yeah, okay, so look, I want to leave my number one because ratepayers need to know how much this is costing. And I'm happy to remove number two. Now, I was hoping maybe councillor Hachidi or another councillor colleague maybe had some wording for a number two. Because I do agree that it should move along, but I want to be completely transparent. Um our ratepayers need to know exactly where their money is going.
Thank you councillor.
I, I'm, I'm happy with number one as it is, I don't think we need a number two at this stage. We've just gone into close and asked the CEO, who will come back to us on other things. I think, um given that information from what I understood was not too far away because it's been received by the CEO. Um yes, start the, the process of the consultation again. Ensure residents know what the new cost of this building is. Um whilst that is happening, the DA is still going through. Whilst that is happening, we'll get more information then as a council, we can decide which way we're going.
Okay, fair enough, thank you.
Through the chair, through the chair, thank you councillor Hachidi. Um I'm happy with that and I really hope that my fellow councillor colleagues are on board with this. Because we cannot spend ratepayers' money lightly, especially such a large amount. So I really hope everyone's on board with this, I encourage everyone to support this, thank you.
Thank you councillor.
Madam Mayor, can I just clarify, um that given the substantial motion and the forshaded motion are now the same, does that mean the forshaded motion gets withdrawn?
Uh happy to withdraw.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Kellyanda, I, yeah, I gather you were happy to withdraw, seeing you raised it. Okay, is there any opposition? No opposition?
I'm going to vote against it.
Sorry, Madam Mayor, I vote against it.
Yep.
Yeah, Shilton against.
Thank you. All right, I'll put the motion as then the rest of the councillors voting for, we don't. We don't, I don't think we believe, we need a record of voters, but people are asking, you know, to be against it. Okay, the motion is moved and it is adopted. The next item is, thank you very much, everybody for persevering. I apologize for forgetting about this particular one. I think dinner being on the horizon probably moved me along. Um, so thank you all very much for your patience. Um, we will be, um, moving all the, um, hopefully other items along the, to the next agenda so that councillors can be aware that things are actually moving along and I'd be happy for that to be in the minutes. Um, but as you all are aware, these are very difficult times and we are trying to be, um, as, um, official as we can and as officious as we can and use everybody's technology and time as wisely as can. So thank you so much and also, um, make it official as of this afternoon, late this afternoon. As most of you would now know, but for the record, um, the local government elections will be pushed out for 12 months. And on that note.
An urgency motion that that doesn't happen?
Can't, sorry councillor, no. Thank you all very much.
Why?